My name is Lindsay DiMedio and I am the proud principal of the Colonial Virtual Program. One of our goals this school year was to give our students the opportunity to have experiences that they could potentially have if they were in person. So out of that became our enrichment programs. So students got to partake in things such as after-school Lego Club, our culinary program, art club, I think we had a yoga club. There were 150 students that were involved in our enrichment program. One of our teachers came to us and said, "I think we should do a competition. These kids are really geared up for culinary." And so we came up with the chopped competition. And so Alexandra Adams is one of our teachers and Mr. Joe Gleason, and they are going to tell you a little bit more about what that is.
Yeah, so the chopped competition was a four-week competition, and we were lucky to have many students sign up. And each week they were given three ingredients that they had to use to cook. And we have our winner here, Giselle.
Chloe.
First place and runner-up, and we are so excited to have them. And what was your winning dish? Can you tell us?
My winning dish was ranch sauce, mashed potatoes, and mushroom sauce and sweet.
Yes, yeah. So it was really, it was really some tough competition. And we had a staff chop competition last night, and the families have requested their own chopped competition. So we are excited and ready to do so. And Zoe's gonna tell us, because they brought a little something they want to make tonight for you. So Zoe's gonna tell you about it.
Today we're making spring popcorn. It was involving popcorn, chocolate, M&Ms, and sprinkles.
And you will all get your taste.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we had our priority streak here.
I also would like to let the board know that through this competition, we got some recognition from, from an amazing grandmother who said, "I wanna, you all are doing amazing things." So she donated 60 hand mixers to our culinary program, which was amazing. We were on the news for that. And then KitchenAid heard about it, and they said, "We're donating 60 more." And we want to donate another mixer, because the grandmother wanted to donate a mixer to someone who showed culinary excellence. So Chloe, do you like your mixer?
Yes.
And she's already made. What did you make?
Cake.
Cake, and it's Chloe's birthday today, so we're super excited to have her here. So Malaya, what's your favorite part of enrichment?
I like that they can come to anything, like cook and draw.
Yeah, cooking and drawing, definitely. And JJ, what's your favorite part of enrichment?
I think it's drawing and drama is what I was also doing.
Oh, yeah. We were so lucky to have the middle school teacher, Nicole Dinkins, who was willing to help us out with the drama club. And you guys acted out a couple different things, right?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. One thing we're really excited for about in our spring enrichment is a shark tank competition. So we're interested to see what comes out of that and what different inventions and, and, and cool things the kids come up with. Awesome. Now, let's add the final touches.
Do the board members have any questions for our awesome representative about life in the virtual program?
Not that y'all just want to eat.
We can respect that.
Yeah, M&Ms.
Yeah, you hear M&Ms driving around. Okay, girls, they want to eat, so let's go get them their popcorn. We'll walk over here.
So, Miss Medio, what's the, what's been the positive, I guess, the reaction from the families with respect to how the virtual program has been working for them as well? We see the students are doing engaging and enriching activities, but any feedback?
So I, I think that, you know, the virtual program came out of a necessity through COVID, but it has quickly become a program where families feel like their children are learning above and beyond. They get a lot of individualized attention through the virtual program, and so they have opportunities to be enriched all throughout the day.
So we heard what your favorite part was about enrichment. Come on back up to the mic. Maybe, do you have a favorite class in the virtual world that you'd like to share your thoughts about for the audience?
Um, my favorite class is math, because I really like my math teacher.
Is he standing right there?
Yeah, she's really nice.
Great.
That's Mrs. Redrow.
Okay, Mrs. Redrow.
So, you know, give her, her credit.
Um, my favorite class is probably ELA. I just find it one of the biggest subjects to me.
Um, my favorite class is social studies, because I like everything that we learn, like about economy and stuff like that.
My favorite class is ELA, because we read books and we have a reading book called Switch. It's the best part.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Your concoction is delicious.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to get one of those chocolate melting things from my coffee. Taking away butter and salt. Thank you very much. Well, congratulations, ladies, and congratulations, Chloe, on winning the blender.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
And sharing your talent.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna get a picture.
Yeah, why don't we get the whole board up? Where do you, uh, right in front of the, uh... Yeah, what's, uh...
We're gonna get you some.
Oh, yeah.
We have plenty of containers.
All right, ready? One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, our next order of business is who we are. Thank you, Mr. Schiller. We have, as we started to ease off of our COVID restrictions and getting back into in-person meetings, we're fortunate to have some students here to recognize that exemplify who we are. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson, our PIO, to kind of walk us through that.
Good evening, Dr. Menzer, and fellow board members, and all of you here from Colonial Nation. Tonight, we want to say congratulations to William Penn's Culinary Arts Department. Eight students went to the Chase Center earlier this month to compete in the Ninth Annual Delaware Pro State Student Invitational. Much like the show called Chopped, 11 teams from 10 schools around the state raced against the clock to prepare a meal judged by top chefs and industry experts. William Penn's four-student team took home second place. Four other students on a marketing team had to face, had to face a panel of judges about a fictitious restaurant concept they created called Wildflower Dining. The team took home third place. We are proud of these students, especially since all of them learned virtually last year. They worked hard and look forward to competing in next year's competition. We have certificates for the students. In the marketing team, if they will come forward, we have Juan Chihuahua, Ariana Pastura, Saria Marquis, Lira, and Warren Thomas.
Warren? Stay up here for a photo. Sarash. Juan. Folks, come on right here. Right here.
Ready? Three, two, one. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
For culinary taking second place, we have Ariana Davis, Michael Pioli, Ramon Thomas, and Devon Campbell.
Ariana.
Right there.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And next, we have special congratulations to Brandon Greigo, who will go down into the history, folks, here at William Penn. Brandon pitched the first-ever perfect game in school history against the Charter School of Wilmington by throwing 64 pitches in seven innings, not letting a single player get on base, and by striking out seven batters with no runs. There is not a perfect game on record for William Penn or the former Newcastle Pie from the records dating back to 1908. Brandon, thank you for recognizing who we are.
And on today, too.
Don't move. You're a tab. All right. Hold on. Good. Ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Go Colonials! And I'm not sure if Gabe Valhon is here. Is he here? We do want to recognize him tonight. The Colonial School Board would like to recognize him, because he scored a career high of 1,000 points for the basketball team. Gabe has truly proved to be an asset to the Colonials and is keeping his postgraduate options open for now. But we want him to know that Colonial Nation is very proud of him. We'd also like to recognize the chefs that they would come forward from our Culinary Arts Program here at William Penn. They worked virtually and in-person, and they have taken these students to a grand, grand new level.
Mr. Deener, Mr. LaBorno, Stockham, Stockham, brand new to us this year.
Thank you for all you do. And Kyle Hitchens from the baseball team, if you'd like to stand.
Yeah.
Thank you for leading our team. Thank you. And that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
So we'll take a brief pause for those who need to exit the dojo homework and get out the door. Otherwise, we're gonna just keep moving on with the meeting. Or enjoy your popcorn and enjoy the rest of the show tonight.
It's not a show?
I'm sorry. Enjoy Mr. Schiller as he runs the meeting.
I can make it a show.
All right, let's move on. All right, moving ahead. Next on the agenda is item number six. All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Ms. Handy and seconded by Ms. Smith. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Naye?
Robin gave a thumbs up.
And Robin gave a thumbs up? Okay, that, that passes unanimously. The next item is consideration for a student member non-voting on the Colonial School Board. In your packets, you have William Penn's recommendation of three candidates. As you know, in June of 2020, the district established a process of recruiting and nominating a William Penn student to be on the board as a non-voting member. We had Cheyenne serving in that role. She didn't join us this evening. She's been attending monthly sessions and joining you in conversations and shared her insight during these meetings. She's graduating in June, so we're gonna be replacing her in June. And so I'm asking that you take action on the nominations as presented by William Penn High School.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendations for student representative to the board as presented?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. PQ and seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the termination of employee number 22-106 as presented during executive session.
I make a motion to approve the termination of employee 22-106 as presented in executive session.
All second.
All right. Thanks, Mr. PQ, and seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the termination of employee number 22-106. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Robin gave a thumbs up.
And Robin gave a thumbs up? Okay, that, that passes unanimously.
The next item is consideration for a student member non-voting on the Colonial School Board. In your packets, you have William Penn's recommendation of three candidates. As you know, in June of 2020, the district established a process of recruiting and nominating a William Penn student to be on the board as a non-voting member. We had Cheyenne serving in that role. She didn't join us this evening. She's been attending monthly sessions and joining you in conversations and shared her insights during these meetings. She's graduating in June, so we're gonna be replacing her in June. And so I'm asking that you take action on the nominations as presented by William Penn High School.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendations for student representative to the board as presented?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. PQ and seconded by Mr. Handy to accept the, to accept the recommendations for a student board representative. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Crossen?
There's thumbs up.
All right. Nayes? Hearing none, that motion passes. Then moving on with updates from the Delaware School Board Association.
No updates yet from legislative committee.
No updates yet from Legislative Committee. We meet later this month.
Yeah, and our board of directors is not here.
And Leo is not with us this week, so there'll be no report.
All right. Any items removed from the consent agenda? I don't recall any. Any items that were added? And I don't recall any. So it's time for our public comment.
We have no public comments from the virtual attendees. So we do have, you have pretty two public comments.
Yeah, actually have three at the moment.
Okay.
Typically, Mr. Laws will read this long paragraph. Everybody that filled out for public comment has their name above that paragraph, so I will pass on that. I will pass on the legal disclosure for public comment and invite Ms. Tanya Kearns to come to, up to the table here.
I will remind you, in the spirit of Mr. Laws, you have three minutes.
Oh, yeah.
No, we left the light in the box. I'll use my clock, I'll use my phone.
He did not beep the timer to me.
He has a timer. Good evening, everyone. I just have three things. First, I wanted to thank, thank you for providing attachments to the board agenda online. It definitely helps us understand what's being talked about. Can you hear Chris? Can I hear you?
You're fine, you're here.
It definitely helps us understand what's being talked about in the business being conducted at the board meetings. The second thing I have is on middle school health education requirements. I'm concerned that the seventh graders, especially at Gunnings Bedford, are not getting their health requirements according to the state. And the reason why is because my daughter's in seventh grade. Health was not on her schedule this year. I asked her to talk to her counselor during the third marking period. The counselor told her she was not going to change her schedule. So then I called, asked that her schedule be changed for the fourth marking period so that she could have help. Because I know it's a requirement for seventh grade as well as eighth grade. Her, her schedule was changed, but my concern is how many other students are affected by this as well. And then the last thing I have is Chromebook security. I'm again at a concern regarding security and monitoring. I've got one of those adventurous daughters, so she gets into a lot. Chromebook is one of them. I checked her Chromebook the weekend and found out that she had three Chrome, uh, Google accounts. She had the Colonial account, then she had two more that she had created. So she is signing in using her Colonial, then she's switching over to her other Google account and having a good time on the internet. So I don't know if we can prevent that in the future, but that's something to look at. And also monitor some of the sites they're visiting. I did block a couple of sites using NoGuardian. But again, I mean, that's what I'm doing as a parent, but I don't know other parents are doing that as well. And that's all I know.
Thank you, Ms. Kearns. I'll definitely get someone to look into the Gunnings Bedford thing and reach out to you at the, at the, at the curriculum level from this, from our CNI division. And then also the Chromebook security. We do, you're describing something that's not unusual. We do, those things are tracked and monitored, so if they go to sites, even if they log into that computer, that pings in our master database at NoGuardian. So if she were to go somewhere of alarm, those messages still go to a central person. But in terms of the access through, like, I know they go through a different YouTube channel. You go here, you can get in a different way.
Right. I mean, she was on some, some site where I believe she actually had access to a phone.
I'm gonna have our tech supervisor reach out and I'll kind of talk through it for you.
And I did send a message to, to tech, but I haven't heard back.
Okay, great. Can you use the online portal?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll follow up with that for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, our next public comment is from Chantella Taylor.
And Riley.
And Riley.
I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but my niece here, she wanted to speak, so I'm gonna go ahead and let her speak. She's the sister of Chloe Taylor that won the virtual CHOP.
Oh, nice.
And this is the brother of Garrett. Well, what I would like to say while she's preparing herself is that it's been a great experience seeing the kids on Zoom doing the CHOP. And I can tell you, when I call over to the house and I'm like, "Well, what's for dinner?" They're like, "Oh, Chloe's, we're waiting on Chloe. She's doing it." So it's like the parents are no longer involved because the kids want to just go ahead and jump in. And I can say that this young lady here is excited about it because she, now she wants to be just like, you know, her sister. She wants to be able to cook and everything. So it's a great experience and I hope that you guys continue to do it and also get more support.
Did you like the lamb chops? I heard that you had lamb chops. I was gonna say, that was...
Very nice. Just talk. We have roughly five minutes.
I love my sister and...
All right.
And I love her so much.
She's been trying, she's been trying to get to school, but you know, due to the COVID email, she hasn't. But maybe next year it will get her.
And I'm so excited for school.
I could teach you, jockey for another thing. Chocolate in there. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chantella.
And last but not least, Ms. Lane? Well, being no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
So movement second, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, there we are.
Thank you, Robyn. Good deal. Thank you, Robyn, for joining us. Take care.